Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. In just a minute or two, we'll be ready to start this evening's action meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have pushed this since last year and I finally got to do this tonight, and it is my honor to introduce you to North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, Steel Band, Ms. Moffett. I'd also like to ask the media to come out here, and I always see bad stories. Here's a good story. These kids work hard, and I hope everybody gets a chance to go see them throughout the county when they play. I know they're getting ready to play us one more song, so I want to say thank you for all the hard work you young students do for us.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett, students, Dr. Santini, for bringing the kids out here. And awesome, what a way to start the meeting. Thank you. At this time, the school board meeting of November 5th, 2013, is called to order. The time is 6:05 PM. We request that you turn off your cellular phones or put them into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the agenda. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance, three recognitions, one resolution, one acknowledgement. Public comment, consent action items, which include two items under executive services, six items under business and finance, seven items under operations, four items under teaching and learning, three superintendent's recommendations, one of which is good cause. Dr. Graham, would you please provide an explanation for the good cause item?
The good cause item is to bring forward the TAO gratification, and we'd like to be able to work through the payroll process to get our employees their increase in salary.
Thank you. As presiding officer, I find that there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. Also on the agenda, one attorney's recommendation, three items for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Armstrong, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. This evening, Mr. Scott will deliver the invocation, after which Mrs. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, once again, we come to you giving thanks for the opportunity to serve. We ask that you walk with us through each of the matters that come before us tonight. We ask for your wisdom and strength to make the right decisions, ones that will benefit students, parents, staff, and fellow citizens. We thank you for all the blessings that you've provided. Help us to use those blessings for the good of all we serve, and not for personal gain. We give you all the glory and honor. Amen.
Amen. At this time, please welcome Lieutenant Colonel Ronnie St. Clair, who will introduce the cadets presenting the colors this evening. Lieutenant Colonel St. Clair is the senior army instructor for Estero High School's JROTC program. He retired after 21 years of active military service. He also retired after 21 years from the Texas teacher system. He has served in the district for one year.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's color guard is presented by Estero High School JROTC. Right guard is Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Kyle Tompkins, a junior and the Echo Company Executive Officer. U.S. colors are carried by Cadet's Captain Gennaro Teas, a senior and Echo Company Commander. The state flag is carried by Cadet 2nd Lieutenant Myra Batista, a senior and the Battalion Supply Officer. Left guard is Cadet Sergeant Major Daniel Oaks, and he's the Bravo Company Commander. At this time, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. After the special presentations, we will have a brief recess, so if anyone wishes to leave, they may do so. I'm going to combine two recognitions because they involve the same group of outstanding individuals. I would like the district's Executive Director of Financial Accounting, Mr. William Tubb, and Director of Financial Accounting, Mark Santiago, to join me at the lectern. The district's financial accounting department has once again earned two of the most prestigious awards in the financial accounting field. Both are related to the preparation and reporting of the district's comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012. Oh, good, you've got everybody up here. That's great, okay. The first award is the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented by the Association of School Business Officials International. And the second is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented by the Government Finance Officers Association. I need two hands for this one. The fact that our financial accounting department has received these awards for the past 10 years speaks volumes of the expertise and dedication of the staff. I also think it's important to acknowledge the role that Mrs. Greta Campbell, now retired, played in the district's excellent financial reporting record. We are very pleased to recognize the financial accounting department currently under the direction of Mr. William Tubb and Mr. Mark Santiago for receiving these rewards.
I'm as pleased and happy as I can be to be up here representing the department, but I'll remind you all that I'm a new boy on the block, and any accolades belong to Mr. Santiago and his team. I just hope that I can be here as happy next year doing the same thing.
Madam Chairperson, Board Members, and Dr. Graham, I wanted to take a moment to thank you all for your continued support of the Financial Services Department. I would be remiss if I did not state that recognitions like these would not be possible without the continued dedicated efforts of all of the department's staff, especially the work of the accountants, two of which were able to join us here tonight. They are Ms. Jeanette Angersall and Ms. Lucy Best.[749.12][749.12](applause) I also wanted to publicly thank the other two accountants in the department that could not be with us tonight, and they are Ms. Lori Tant and Ms. Sarah Cox. As was mentioned by Ms. Morgan, this is the 10th consecutive year that the department has been recognized with these awards from the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officials. My predecessor and mentor, Mrs. Greta Campbell, demonstrated to us a legacy of excellence in financial reporting, and we appreciate the support of both the board and the superintendent as we strive daily to carry on that legacy.
I would like to invite the following individuals from Intervision Programs to please join me here at the lectern. Ms. Linda Montgomery, Parent Involvement Specialist.
Do you not have the awards? I was told you.
Okay. The intent of the school improvement and accountability legislation is to improve Florida's schools by returning the responsibility for education to those closest to the students, the schools, the teachers, and the parents. Recognizing that the involvement of community is vital to student success, the Commissioner of Education and the Commissioners Community Involvement Council established the Five-Star School Award, which is the highest award for community involvement. To qualify for this award, a school must receive or achieve 100% of the required criteria and provide a portfolio that documents the achievement of criterion in the following areas: business partnerships, family involvement, volunteers at the school, student and community service, and the school advisory council. This evening, we are pleased to recognize and extend our congratulations to 25, 25 schools that have met the strenuous requirements to receive the Five-Star School Award for the 2012-13 school year. As I announce the names of the schools, I would like for the representatives from each to come forward for a group picture with the board members and the superintendents. So I think we've got somebody over there, we've got Vanna White over there that is making sure she gets everybody down here correctly. And I'm going to start with the elementary schools, and I'll call them in one group. Let's begin with Bay Shore Elementary. If you'll just come up, those of you that are here from Bay Shore Elementary, Bonita Springs Elementary, Cape Elementary, Harons Marsh Elementary, J. Colen English Elementary, Orangewood Elementary, Patriot Elementary, San Carlos Park Elementary, Spring Creek Elementary, Tanglewood Elementary, Three Oaks Elementary, Trafalgar Elementary, and Villas Elementary. Let's give all of these schools a round of applause for their hard work. Congratulations, all of you. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations, good job. Congratulations, good job. Hey, congratulations. Did I call too fancy? Congratulations, congratulations. Did I not call you?
You know, we always hit the end. When you're a V, one of the other.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I called you. Y'all are just so slow. Well, that means you get to stand in the front.
Did you want a picture of all the elementary?
Yes, yes.
No. You are high.
Okay, if y'all will all tighten up so we can get a picture. That means act like you love one another, folks. I know that with school choice, you're all competitive, but right now, you have to all be tightened up. Cheese. While they're standing there with their poses of proudness for this award, let's give Something wrong with her camera? Are you kidding me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's when you have another camera.
I've got five star, five star, and I guess we're not doing the...
The other ones, we're just on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, and then afterwards, I'm gonna add. Huh? I don't know. And now, I will call for our middle schools after all of our distinguished elementary folks are back in their seats. Great job, folks. That represents a lot of hours of hard work. Good job. And now, we will have our middle schools. We will begin with Bonita Springs Middle, Calusa Middle, Challenger Middle, Diplomat Middle, Mariner Middle, North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, K-8. Congratulations, congratulations. Three Oaks Middle, and Trafalgar Middle.
How you doing?
Oh, adorable. Congratulations, good job.
Thank you. Congratulations, how are you? Good to see you. Congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good, I love seeing those stickers.
Congratulations, good to see you.
And I love that steel band. I came out early so I could get the whole benefit of them, the entire benefit. I remember years ago, I was in charge of it at one of the schools, and I mean, I remember how, I remember how intensive it was. Thank you guys again. Let's give them another round of applause.[1367.72][1367.72](applause) And certainly last, but certainly not least, our high schools. Cypress Lake High School, Idah Baker High School, Lee High Senior High School, and North Fort Myers High School. If all of you would please come up.
How you doing?
Good to see you.
Good.
I will, I am. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Aren't you happy? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for being here. Good to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Give them another round of applause, folks. And now, I would like to ask Ms. Linda Montgomery if she would come forward. She's already here with me, but I would like to ask her to basically give you a little background and a little bit of history about this program. Linda?
I inherited working with this program about five years ago, and did not realize at all the, how rigorous this process is for these schools. And many of these schools continue to produce their portfolio, their application, year after year. And it takes the whole school community to work on this. It's not just one person at the schools, and I strongly recommend and suggest to the schools to have a committee to work on this because it is such a rigorous process. But it really shows the community effort, the parent involvement, the student learning, and the service learning, the SAC work that is done, because they have to go the extra mile on everything. It is noted at the state level that it is the top-of-the-mountain award, the pinnacle award of community involvement. And I just want to commend these schools for working so hard on this, and it's a privilege for me to work with them each year as they have to reinvent and redo the process every year, and many of them are already hard at work at it. So thank you, Board, Mrs. Fisher, and Dr. Graham for working on this and for recognizing our schools.
I'd like to invite the following individuals to join me here at the lectern. Donna Munsonard, Executive Director of Island Coast FEA, Mark Castellano, President of the Teachers Association of Lee County, and Jamie Michael, President of the Support Personnel Association of Lee County. The National Education Association's Annual American Education Week highlights the importance of providing every child in America with a quality education from kindergarten through college, and the need for everyone to do his or her part to make public schools great. NEA's annual tagline, "Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility," reflects the association's calling upon America to provide students with quality public schools so they can grow, prosper, and achieve in the 21st century. The school board and superintendent recognize that it takes everyone working together to make a difference in the education of our students. With that in mind, American Education Week is being observed as a tribute to students, teachers, support staff, administrators, parents, and community members for their strong commitment to the quality education in the Lee County School District. Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the resolution proclaiming November 18 through 22, 2013, as American Education Week.
Board members, hear the motion to proclaim November 18, 22, as American Education Week. Is there a second? Let me find Mrs. Morgan. Am I in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Donna, would you like to say something?
Thank you once again for recognizing American Education Week, and I think a reflection of American Education Week are the awards that were just given out, because it takes the whole staff in a school to get these awards. And I also would like to invite anyone to come into our schools during that week to see the wonderful, exciting things that are being done in each and every classroom every day in this district. Whether you go to elementary, middle, high school, or visit all three levels, you're going to see some exciting things, and I invite everyone out there to please come and visit.
I just want to thank the board for having this week to honor all of the employees in the...
in the Lee County School District. Thank you.
Character Education Award for November. It is citizenship and patriotism. The quality of an individual's response to a membership in a community. Be aware, be informed, be involved. Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. By John F. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. If anyone wishes to leave the auditorium, we'll take a one-minute recess to allow you to do so. Thank you. Next. This is public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the school board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Fisher, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment to the school board are posted at the back of the room and include the requirement that any speaker who wishes to address the school board to endorse the purchase of a product or a service in which that speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes. Ms. Fisher, I have two cards this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not fill in a card and wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side of the auditorium who did not fill out a card? Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin, please call the first card.
First speaker this evening is Mr. Marvin Getz.
To the Board. Dr. Graham, I'm here this evening to talk about some lost educators of Lee County. They are your substitute teachers. I'm here to talk about lost in many ways. We were lost just a few minutes ago when you gave an award, American Education Week. I heard all these groups mentioned. I never heard a substitute mentioned. I guess we're not a part of it. Over the last few weeks, and again this evening, you're going to vote on pay raises for support staff, for administration, for a lot of different things. But when I come to appear to speak for the substitute teachers, I get the same old story. There's no money. Since our salary is based and tied directly to the bargaining unit of TELC, the Teachers' Association, so if the teachers do not get a raise, either do the substitutes. The last raise for substitutes was in the year 2006, 2007, a 3% at that time. From that point on, teachers received no raises or increases. 2009, 210, they got 1%. Subs received nothing. 210 to 211, no agreement with the teachers, so no raise. 211 to 212, there was a step increase for the first three beginning-year teachers. 212 to 213, no increase and no agreement. Now, 213, 214, teachers get a considerable increase, and as a result, again, nothing for substitute teachers. When was Board and superintendent recognize that subs, guest teachers, visiting teachers are all instructional teachers? As to the support we get, we get little. We, at the present time, we feel it's going downhill. We used to have current monthly consult meetings with administration. They've fallen by the wayside. When we have a concern of any issue, such as some of our elementary schools that had failing grades are increasing the instructional time by one hour, and I ask the question, teachers are going to get their current one-hour salary for that increased time. What about a substitute teacher? No answer. Still, we have a substitute training program. You budgeted $2,000 to us. Here it is, no.
Thank you, Mr. Getz. Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Jerry Rutherford.
I want to thank the school board and superintendent for this opportunity to speak concerning placing Bibles in the Lee County public schools. What we do is both legal and constitutional. You can check that with your attorney and with Dr. Graham. We started Bible distribution in Carja County in 2007. That first year, we covered the eight high schools. Over 2,000 students took a Bible. The event has continued to be well-received. There were initially news articles on the event, naturally, and they were very positive, but now it's just kind of a non-event. It's just become commonplace. Last year, Orange County opened up for us, and we took over 2,000 Bibles. And the problem was that we were out of Bibles by the end of the first lunch period. The comment by one of the school board members was, "That was a good problem to have." We will be starting the event in Lake County this January. Regarding the Bible, there's not an event in life that we encounter that's not covered in the Bible. Consider, in the area of literature, it covers songs, poetry, and I'm not going to mention the books of the Bible that they're in, even though I could, wisdom, love, law, census-taking, astronomy, that's in Job, he talks about the circle of the earth before Columbus ever thought of it, beginnings, leaders, war tactics, government, life, and the meaning of life, warnings. In the area of life and science, it covers the constellations. Job talked about Orion, and he talked about the leviathans, what we'd call today the dinosaurs. Talks about suicide and why people commit suicide, abortion, illegal aliens, farmers, sex, marriage, family, physics, critical thinking skills, math, weight and measures, economy, laziness and diligence, angels and demons, heaven and hell. Talks about medicine, psychiatry, psychology, study habits, memorization, bullying. And I could go on and on, but I'll give you a few more. Talks about music and musical instruments, geography and borders, crime, punishment, and restitution, geology, language, arts and interior design, tyranny and freedom, sports, occupation, health standards, theology, craftsmanship, genealogy, gemology, flight and aircraft, transportation. So you see that even though I can't mention all of them, the Bible covers any imaginable subject we could talk about. During the, before I go to that, though...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Your three minutes are past. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Jane Cockle.
Good evening.
Evening.
Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Graham. I'm here this evening to speak to you about Mr. Scott's ongoing pleas to move on and how best we can help make that happen. To briefly recap, the previous three years under Dr. Burke's administration were, as confirmed by the Inspector General's report, disastrous at best. There were ongoing violations of state law, state statute, board policy, and good management practices. During that same period, the district dropped from an A school district to a C school district and overspent their allocated budget by 20-plus million dollars per year. Dr. Burke subsequently resigned, knowing that any one of the confirmed allegations would have been grounds for dismissal. However, those who were charged with Dr. Burke's oversight had knowledge of these wrongdoings and did nothing to protect the district are equally responsible, but chose not to resign. It's understandable that Mr. Scott would not want any discussion of the past. Had he been an employee and not an elected official, his job would have been eliminated immediately, and he would have been shown the door. The district has a long way to go now just to catch up with the last, from where we were last three years ago. Doing the same thing and expecting different results, as most people know, is the definition of insanity. Moving on is not what is needed now. The district needs to move forward and upward. It's time for positive change. It's time to give Dr. Graham the expertise and leadership and leadership experience that she will need to take us back to the top where we were and where we belong. At your next board action meeting, you will be electing new officers. Keeping the same board majority and vice chair and chair can only be interpreted as a show of power to keep the board split and an attempt to give more exposure to those who will be up for election. Most boards and city councils routinely rotate their officers, recognizing that every member of the board is elected on an equal basis, and each member brings a different set of knowledge, talents, and skills. Electing officers of the board should be about building a team which can focus and give direction to the new superintendent toward the rebuilding of a world-class school district. Therefore, tonight, I am respectfully requesting that the current board majority graciously step aside, allow other board members an opportunity for leadership, and begin to work as a team rather than as a three-person show. I thank you for your time tonight, and I...
Thank you. Ms. Donna Muntzenhardt.
Evening again, Ms. Fisher, Board members, and Dr. Graham. I'm Donna Muntzenhardt, Executive Director of Island Coast FEA Service Unit, and I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Teachers Association and the school district bargaining teams. We spent about six months working together using the interest-based process to tweak and improve our contract. I am asking you to approve the agreement between the Teachers Association and the school district this evening. I do need to acknowledge and thank a few individuals who helped make this possible. First, I need to thank the TELC negotiations team, Dr. Atkins, and the district negotiations team for their dedication to the process and working to get the best negotiated agreement for this time. I especially want to thank our facilitators who helped us through the process. District administrators Marsha Brewer, Nikita Walker, Shelley Halsted, and Patty Elkin. Our TELC and facilitators included Sarah Kohoff, Janet Borchers, Debbie Feit, Deborah Graves, Kelsey Lewis, and Joseph Rustino. They kept us focused on the task at hand, which at times could be compared to herding cats. All of the people involved in the process should be proud of the work we did over those six months. The TELC bargaining unit had an 89.6 approval rate. Now it's your turn. You are the final step in the process. Thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you. Mark Castellano.
Those of you who are always impressed with the technology I've upgraded to an iPad, how exciting. Good evening, Ms. Fisher, Board members, Dr. Graham. I am Mark Castellano, proud president of the Teachers Association of Lee County. I would like to express my appreciation for your expected ratification of a new contract between the school district and TELC. While we are pleased that the vast majority of our teachers will receive a $1,700 increase beginning with their December 13 pay, this is not a time to celebrate. Reality is that since last March, teachers have heard nonstop that the governor promised them a $2,500 raise for an effective rating and $3,500 for a highly effective rating. We have had to explain endlessly why and how $2,500 or $3,500 became $1,700. Some teachers, most teachers, seem to have understood how this can happen when a politician's promise must be navigated through the vagaries of the Florida Legislature. They understood the strings that were tied to this appropriation. They understood what the legislature did to these funds, but what they struggle with is why our current school board didn't make any effort to fill in where the legislature fell short. They know that they are working harder and under more difficult circumstances than ever and look to our district leaders to find a way to make this promise whole. We, as union leaders and district leaders, can understand the reality that impacts these situations. But most of our teachers live in a world where their focus is on their students and the demands of their classroom. With the changing of the education world coming in 2014-15 courtesy of the Governor and Legislature through Senate Bill 736, it will be our hope that this board will look at ways to make up the stagnation teachers experienced during the darkest days of the recessions. We will look forward to our conversations and finding options to make this happen when we resume negotiations next spring. In the meantime, thank you for ratifying this agreement tonight in time to make the holidays a little brighter for our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cockle, thank you for sharing your opinions with us. Ms. Muntzenhardt and Mr. Castellano, thank you for supporting our teachers and thank our teachers for the hard work that they do, and we are happy that there is a raise this year. Mr. Getz, we need to continue conversation, and I apologize that substitutes were not included in the recognition for Education Week because honestly, we know that substitutes are a critical entity to our daily operations in our schools. So, please accept my personal apology for that. Mr. Rutherford, we appreciate your offer, and I will initiate a conversation with Dr. Graham and Mr. Martin and see what we can do with that. Thank you for that. Okay, moving right along. Next is the approval of action. Next is the Approval of Action Items in the Agenda Under Consent. Board Members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business table portion of the agenda? Ms. Dozier?
Yes, I have one under consent, under Roman numeral five, Teaching and Learning, D1, page 65.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Well, I have the same one to pull. Also, Agenda Item 4D2, page 67, and Item Number 5C, page 85.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Armstrong?
I have none tonight.
Okay.
6C would actually be a superintendent's recommendation, so it'll be dealt with individually.
Oh, next, thank you.
Is it 6 or 5?
Okay, we'll scratch that. Thank you. Mr. Scott?
I have none.
And I have none. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Agenda's consent items with the exception of the pulled items?
Some moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mrs. Morgan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zero. Okay, we have three pulls this evening.
Two.
Pulls, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. The first one is 4D1. Dr. Graham?
I recommend approval of Learning for Life grant proposal to continue a character education program conducted under contract by the Boy Scouts of America for program costs of $160,000 for the period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014 with no additional cost to the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents to approve normal and customary accounting, bookkeeping and payroll processes to maintain continuity of federal and state grant expenditures during fiscal year changes and other technical transitions. Any process is so approved by the superintendent will represent best practices and will conform to funding agency regulations.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the pulled item?
Some moved.
Support. Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
Yes. While I am very familiar with the Character Education Program, it's $160,000 and I know at the earlier meeting, I spoke about garnish on our plates and I said that, you know, while you have a little bit of garnish on a plate, it, you know, it's something that's really unnecessary. And the only way that we will know whether a program is effective and whether it is necessary and it's something that we should continue using is to have some type of a check and balance on that to make sure that we are getting some kind of a benefit for that. And, you know, I used the T-word earlier, which is a word that I, you know, I know that parents say that we have a lot, you know, it's just so excessive, but I do believe to be physically responsible, we have got to begin to look at all of the programs that we have out there and we have to look at the programs themselves and are we getting, are we getting our money's worth? Are we getting $160,000 worth? Dr. Graham, I am going to support this this evening. However, in the future, I would like for you to bring us some type of a plan of action of how we are going to look over all of the extra plans that we have so that as a board we can determine when it comes time for us to begin to build the budget and make some tough decisions. We can look at some of the information on how we have evaluated and assessed these programs maybe to make good data-driven decisions because I think that is the way we want to make decisions because that is a high-performing organization. So I would like to see us making decisions based on the data that the programs are supplying. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Board Members? Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I'm just going to read again. The surveys, the desired outcomes will be determined by surveys given to the teacher and students. Surveys will be offered using pre-test process where applicable, and the classroom teacher implementing the program will evaluate the student's behavior. Improvements in classroom behavior will be reflected through teacher reporting of observations and a reduction in discipline referrals. So I asked the question, where is the survey of desired outcomes? And there wasn't one initially, but Dr. McCullers was nice enough to forward on to me the national survey, and I'm going to tell you what was in the national survey. Ninety percent of the respondents were satisfied with the curriculum, but only 50% were willing to promote it and only one-third involved parents in their programs. Dr. McCullers then sent me the survey that had been forwarded to him from the local provider, but the survey provided to him simply offers eight words and character traits, whereas the national survey specifically identifies outcomes and asks respondents to agree, somewhat disagree, disagree. So like Mrs. Dozier, this is federal money, so it's not money out of our pocket, but my issue, and I brought it up with Dr. Graham, is the amount of time that we allocate to these programs. And I want to be confident that we are spending time on things that are meaningful to the classroom teacher and the student. So like Mrs. Dozier, I have not brought up this priority of mine before. I will pass this grant tonight, or I will support the passage or the acceptance of this grant tonight, but going forward, every single grant that comes before this board, every single program expenditure, I am going to want to see the outcomes, the expected outcomes and the instrument that's going to be used to evaluate the program and who will be doing the evaluation. So that is my comment.
Thank you. And any other comments, Board Members? Mr. Scott?
I'm glad to hear you say that because that's something I've been asking for, for about three years. Anything we do has to be measured in terms of its result and whether it's our money, federal money, which is our money and coming out of a different pocket, makes no difference to me. We've got to protect the time and talent of those who are working for us, particularly those in the classroom, not overburden them with things that don't provide any positive result for students. So I jump on your bandwagon tonight, Mrs. Morgan. We need to know what it is we're going to get or what we have gotten when we're asked to renew these programs again. And we talked this afternoon about data and in some cases it's tough to collect, but we have to find a way to collect it so we can answer the questions in a deliberative, thoughtful process.
Thank you. Mr. Armstrong, did you have something?
Okay, I'm just going to weigh in a little bit. We have been receiving money from the state legislature for about nineteen, I think this is the 19th year for a Learning for Life program through the Boy Scouts of America. It was written into statute, actually, and it is no cost to the district. And the time people who are volunteers for Learning for Life do assist with the presentation of programs, as do many other of our community agencies, they have a speakers bureau and then they have a facilitator who trains our teachers to use the very user-friendly and online curriculum and which covers a multitude of things. And there is a parent involvement part in that if you look online at the programs. The evaluation, I can't really speak very clearly to that, but I know that surveys are sent out pre and post and that it has just recently been refined or reduced because of the cumbersome national evaluation and they got special permission to, for our teachers to not use too much time in reporting back and they selected the important earmarks that they were looking for. So, and I appreciate your comments, but I just wanted to weigh in on that. The next item, next pulled item?
We need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote. Okay. At this time, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Five zero. The next pulled item is 4D2. Dr. Graham?
I recommend board approval for the contract with Progressive Bridges, Inc. to provide PBIS training and support for Manatee Elementary, Colonial Elementary, Fort Myers Middle Academy and James Stevens International Academy in the amount of $42,000.
Okay, is there a motion for the second pulled item?
Some. Some moved. Second.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? Mrs. Morgan?
I pulled this item for exactly the same reason that I pulled the previous item. We have a consultant contract. Everything, almost everything specified in this contract is outcomes without evidence. I asked two questions. How will we evaluate the performance of Progressive Bridges and will the school staff participate in answering the questions of the quality of the performance and the quality of the deliverables? I got back a lengthy document, but really it's talking about process. Certain, we'll have a certain number of meetings, there'll be a certain number of hours spent in meetings, we will draw up these plans, we will do this, we will do that, but there's nothing about how do we know whether or not this money spent on Progressive Bridges delivered what was expected when the contract was signed, delivered a product that was reliable and valid for the schools and was a productive use of instructor and staff time. So assuming that this contract may come up for renewal again, I'm going to ask the same question. I would like to see the instrument used to evaluate the effectiveness of this program in its first year before I will be willing to entertain a renewal of the contract.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I'd just like to say there was a time when we had programs and we had almost like an order or a calendar, if you would, and those programs, those program individuals would come forth and they would tell us about the program and how well the program was doing and kind of give us an assessment of it. And I guess that's what I'm asking for, is that we have some way of monitoring and assessing all of these programs that we're spending money on so that we can actually, when we have to go out and speak to different groups and they say, well, I saw on the agenda where you spent $160,000 the other night or you spent $42,000, you know, how can you justify that? And that's the way, as a board member, we can justify that expenditure because we have assessed the program and we've, you know, shown that it is a, it is a good, valid program and it's benefiting our students and it's helping with our student achievement and raising our scores and so forth. So that's, you know, that's what I'm asking for, for us to take a look at all these programs and just have some kind of a timeline where we're going to have an assessment. And I realize that that is lengthy.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier.
I'm not asking for it tomorrow. Next week will be fine.
Could I just, before you say it, I just want to ask a couple of questions. Number one, how many years have we had PBIS in this district? Number two, how many schools are now currently participating in that and where is the data?
I'll have to get you that information. I can tell you the reason this has come up. These are schools that are in need of extra support. They have never had PBS, they have no idea what to do with it, and we are in the process of trying to pull that together with them. It's an extra layer of support. What I'm hearing loud and clear, before I say this, I'll say four months, that's how long I've been here, what I'm hearing loud and clearly is-
Honeymoon's over.
The honeymoon is so over. That's very clear. But what I'm hearing is we finally, and I'm very encouraged, we finally get to stop doing things just because we've always done them, and that's what we're dealing with. And we are becoming a data-driven district. In many, many areas, we are a data-driven district and now we just need to get to those areas where we've just done things because we've done them for a long time. So there will be nothing coming to you like this as time goes on. I won't say ever because there may be one or two more that I've inherited somewhere, but we will have data for you or it won't come to you unless we believe the data is worthy of asking for a renewal. You have my commitment on that.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. You know, this kind of puts me in mind of our discussion this afternoon, all of the programs that were listed that we have that are addressing the health education. So I'm wondering how many programs that we have out there district-wide that we have purchased, how, exactly how well they're being used and then by how many schools and again, where is the data?
Here's the reality, unless something is implemented with fidelity, and I've always joked that I want to meet fidelity because she could really help us out, but if, if programs are done with fidelity, then these questions would be unnecessary. So the first question is, those things that we have purchased, have they been used? Are they even open? And I can't answer all that right now, but we'll unravel it and nothing will come to you unless the data says it needs to come back.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Board Members? Then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zero. Okay, then next on the agenda is Superintendent's Recommendations. The first one for good cause. Dr. Graham?
Sorry, I went down to where the pulls were. First recommendation is good cause for board ratification of the FY14-16 collective bargaining agreement with the Teachers Association of Lee County and an estimated expenditure for FY14 of $9.6 million.
You've heard the Superintendent's Recommendation that the board ratify the FY14 to 16 collective bargaining agreement? Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I'd just like to say I will be supporting this this evening and again, you know, our educators, as well as our support people, are very dedicated, they're very committed and they're very hardworking. And I think there are very few people that go into education and say, I'm going to become a millionaire because it just, you know, there's just not that money in education. If we could give larger raises, we would do that. I'm going to take this opportunity, Mr. Getz, to say that I do regret that you were not included because I was hoping that you would be called as well because y'all do take up the slack when teachers are not in the classroom. But as far as the Talc contract, is it the best we can do? Well, I heard Mrs. Muntzenhardt say that a lot of people were around that table, there were a lot of facilitators, a lot of committed time, and it's the best that you can come up with. And is it what we would like? Maybe not. Maybe we'd like a little bit more for the teachers. But I thank you for all of your work, all of you that were on the committee, because I know it is a very, very long process and it's also oftentimes a very trying process. But I can also remember the days here in Lee County when we did not use the interest-based bargaining. In fact, we are the envy of many counties around the state because they always say, how in the world do y'all do that? And it's because we use the interest-based. And everybody bought into that, what was it, 11 years ago, 12 years ago, when we, 13 years ago, when we brought that into the district. And I remember going through the training myself as a board member because, you know, I was, you know, it was something that I felt like we needed to go through and I think at that time, every board member went through that training. And it is, you know, it's more work, maybe sometimes, but at the same time, it's the best product that can be put out on the table and so I will be supporting it this evening and thank everyone on the committee for all the work that you put into the agreement that you brought forward. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zero. Thank you. Dr. Graham?
Item B. Approval of the Resolution, I, authorizing the issuance of certificates of participation Series 2013, B, sale thereof and a negotiated private sale to the purchaser, and C, execution and delivery of each of an amended and restated Schedule 1996A and amended and restated Schedule 2004 to the master lease and an escrow deposit agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Board Members, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Support.
Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. We will now recess the regular school board meeting at this time and convene the meeting of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation. As president of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation, I would like to call this meeting of November 5th, 2013, to order. The time is 7:12 PM. This evening's agenda includes public comment, three secretaries' recommendations, other business, and adjournment. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda, directors?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Armstrong, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. Okay. We will now take public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
An opportunity for public comment is provided at this point in the meeting. The subject of comment is limited to the operations of the Leasing Corporation. The time allowed for speaker is three minutes.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right section of the auditorium who wishes to speak on this matter? Anybody in the left section?
No.
Yet.
Are you going to speak?
Are you speaking on the Leasing Corporation? Okay. All right, that's okay. Hang on, we'll be back in a minute. Okay. We will now move to the secretary's recommendations. Dr. Graham.
I recommend approval of the minutes of the last Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting held on February 21st, 2012.
Directors, you've heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the minutes of the February 21st, 2012, meeting of the Leasing Corporation. I will now entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Dozier and supported by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? I will now call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Motion carries, five zero. Dr. Graham?
I recommend approval of the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers.
Directors, you've heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers, namely Mary Fisher, President, Don H. Armstrong, Vice President, Nancy J. Graham, Doctor of Education, Secretary, and Amy V. Desamore, Treasurer. I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Morgan.
Support.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? I will now call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Number two, Dr. Graham.
I recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the issuance through direct private placement sale of not to exceed twenty-six million dollars combined aggregate principal amount of refunding certificates of participation, Series 2013, the Series 2013 certificates, for the purpose of providing funds to refund all or a portion of the school board's outstanding certificates of participation, Series 2004A, and outstanding certificates of participation, Series 2004C, and the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection with the issuance of the Series 2013 certificates.
Directors, I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier and supported by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion on this item? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I'll just say that we were briefed extensively on this by our financial advisor, and I know that Mr. Gang, our attorney that represents us on this, has, in fact, I was told that he was looking to make sure every T was crossed and every I was dotted, and there were a few things that he found and sent back and said, "No, this won't do." And that just shows due diligence in looking out for us as a board and making sure that we are doing everything appropriately. So I will be supporting this, because Mr. Ford has told us that we are going to save a lot of money by doing this. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, board members? I'll now call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Okay, we will now move to other business. Please note that your comments may only be made in your capacity as directors or officers of the corporation. Are there any comments, Mrs. Dozier?
I have none.
Okay, Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Mr. Armstrong?
I have none tonight.
Mr. Scott?
None.
Okay. I would just like to offer thanks to Jerry Ford and Bob Gang, and also to Dr. Desamore for her input and tutelage. And we're happy that we're saving money. That's a good thing. And Dr. Graham? Any comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mr. Armstrong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. At this time, I'll reconvene the regular school board meeting of November 5th, 2013. Dr. Graham, we'll move on to item C and superintendent's recommendations.
Recommend approval of the additional funds for speech, language, occupational therapy, and physical therapy services with Community Rehab Associates, Inc., and an estimated maximum cost to the district of one million dollars for the 2013-14 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? Mrs. Morgan?
On June 4th, when we approved the original million-two, and I quote from the minutes, "Mrs. Morgan noted her concern over the total amount of money in the four agenda items." Actually, it was one of four service contract-related items on the agenda that day. Those items totaled 3.8 million for contracted speech, language, and occupational therapy services. She wondered why we do not have these as regular positions within the district, and also stated these could be positions where we grow our own. Now we're up to almost five million dollars. We hire a lot of these people. I would like to see, I would like to understand why we can't compete in the marketplace for these people instead of paying contractors for these services. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything about this item, but when I read this item and I saw a million dollars, I went, "Wow." And I thought, "Have we ever approved that much at one time before?" And because that was such a large item, I thought, hmm. And I didn't remember us approving that much at one time. I think it was broken down into maybe different chunks. And I do have to say that I do agree with Ms. Morgan. Sometimes it's more efficient to have somebody on staff than to pay the consulting, if you will, or paying for the services on a basis of a contract. So I don't know if we've looked at that, but maybe that might be something that in the future we might want to look at.
We can certainly look at it. I can tell you that this is up to a million. It doesn't mean we'll spend a million.
Right.
And I think the thinking is bring it one time instead of piecemealing it, so you can easily see how much it is.
It used to be piecemealed.
Yeah. As far as growing our own, we'll certainly look at that. I can tell you market value of the people who do these services is much, much more per hour than what we are able to offer. I mean, that's our reality, and the services must be provided based on individual education plans. So we would have to have a much larger conversation, not only about finding the people, but being willing to pay what we would be expected to pay them that they can get in the marketplace. That leads to a conversation, then what about all the other groups we have, collective bargaining groups? And they would expect similar compensation based on marketplace value. So will we look into it? Absolutely. I think that's the simple initial answer. It's a very competitive market, particularly with these specialized services. And it would be a challenge to our system to be able to do that. But we will, we'll look at it.
Programs in the high schools. If we have all those vacancies and no qualified applicants, that's a difficult situation. Thank you. All right, any further...
Wasn't that one of the jobs that we saw in the Market Watch?
The Market Watch, yes.
Absolutely.
Was very short supply in Lee County.
Yes.
So the pool of people is virtually nonexistent based upon those numbers. So we'd have to go out and do some pretty heavy recruiting, and this may be a long-term stopgap way to provide what's needed. But it would be better, I think, long-term to get our own people in the system. But the realistic view of it is that's a tough job, apparently, to fill any place in the county today.
Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I'll just say, like, speech and language therapy, I had a friend up in the Panhandle, and that's what she did. She was on staff there in Escambia County, and she did all of the, you know, the speech therapy throughout the county. She'd done all the testing, and she did everything. And there are people out there. Sometimes it's just a matter of trying to recruit and find them and seeing if we can't, you know, maybe at an early age, talk some of our kids at, you know, in different colleges, you know, into going into that program instead of maybe something else that they're going into.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Moving right on to board attorney's recommendations. Mr. Martin?
Yes, Ms. Fisher. Board members, I have one recommendation this evening, which is approval of settlement agreement concerning student BS. BS is a student with a disability served by the Lee County School District as a result of a lawsuit filed in federal court by his parents. A court in 2003 ordered the school district to provide compensatory educational services to the student for two years beyond the obligation established by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The school district provided six months of that service, and at that time, the parents, through their attorney, approached the school district requesting resolution of the school district's remaining obligation to provide the services through payment of a dollar amount. As a condition of receiving the payment that is being recommended this evening, the parents have signed a release on behalf of the student, releasing the school district from any further liability and from any further responsibility to provide educational services to the student. So this evening, I am recommending board approval of the proposed settlement agreement concerning educational services to BS in an amount of $325,000, thereby releasing the school district of Lee County from any further obligation to provide educational services to the student.
Thank you, board members. You've heard Mr. Martin's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? Mr. Scott?
So this is a ten-year-old case, is that right, Mr. Martin?
Ten years since it was in federal court, actually. The administrative proceeding began in 98.
So this student is what age now?
Twenty-three, I believe.
So over the course of these ten years, taxpayers have paid how much?
I did ask the ESE staff to provide me information in that respect. The cost of services at the private school residential placement over that time has been approximately 2.9 million dollars.
So that's basically the way we ended up with 325,000 as an agreement to settle this?
That was the starting point for the negotiations, yes, sir. We've negotiated a lesser amount than what would be the cost for that eighteen months.
And these funds are going to come from the general fund, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I just hear a little scratching on the door and eroding a considerable sum of money that could be used for a variety of other purposes. And you and Dr. Graham were good enough to come and have a conversation with me about this, and I appreciate that. I have some very strong feelings, but I accept your advice that this is the only way to resolve this. But I want everybody to know how expensive this has been with this one particular student. I was about to ask Mr. Burson earlier this afternoon, is there a distinct difference between our cost of having an ESE student in the system as opposed to a non-ESE student? And I didn't get a chance to ask that one for some reason or another, but I'll speak to you personally about it at some point in the not-too-distant future. But all of this stuff adds up, become a burden on the district, and particularly with a 23-year-old who has been in this situation for ten years. So it's going to have an impact on what we can and can't do as a district this year in terms of expenditure of general fund monies. I'll approve it grudgingly, and know that's the only way to move this thing forward into a conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other discussion, board members? Okay, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. Next on the agenda is public hearing. Dr. Graham, would you please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing item?
Approve adoption of policy 4.14, bullying and harassment is amended. Adoption of this policy shall bring the school district of Lee County into compliance with the statutory changes to the Jeffrey Johnston Stand Up For All Students Act, statute 1,60137, excuse me, section 1,60137 Florida statutes. Upon board approval of the effective date, shall be Tuesday, November 5th, 2013. Second, approve adoption of the 2013-14 Student Progression Plan as presented. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 5th, 2013. And third, approve the adoption of the 2013-14 Middle School and High School Program of Studies as presented. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 5th, 2013.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. At this time, I'll close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. The public will now be invited to speak on these three items. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to speak? Anybody on the left side? Okay, I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of November 5th, 2013. Dr. Graham, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Approve adoption of policy 4.14, bullying and harassment as amended. Adoption of this policy shall bring the school district of Lee County into compliance with the statutory changes to the Jeffrey Johnston Stand Up For All Students Act, section 1,60137 Florida statutes. Upon board approval of the effective date, shall be Tuesday, November 5th, 2013.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Item B, Dr. Graham?
Approve adoption of the 2013-14 Student Progression Plan as presented. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 5th, 2013.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier, supported by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion?
Mrs. Dozier?
I'm glad that we have a student progression plan that we are putting in place for our students that are already in school and have been in school for about three months now. So noted.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Any other comments?
It's no reflection on you or any of your staff.
I know.
It's previous staffs.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Item C?
Approve the adoption of the 2013-14 Middle School and High School Program of Studies as presented. The effective date of the adopted rule is November 5th, 2013.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier. Supported by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? Mrs. Dozier?
I'm so glad that there is a middle school and high school program of studies that represents what the children should be doing in this school year, since they've already been in the schoolhouse for three months now. And I will be supporting this.
Mrs. Dozier?
Moving it forward, Dr. Graham. If it weren't for you, it might not be here yet.
Any other comment, board members? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Moving on to other business, board members, comments and reports. Mr. Scott?
We have a meeting with the legislative delegation on December 3rd, which will be down at Edison College, and we will be taking our legislative plan of action to discuss then, and also proposing a district bill to establish an approval process to expand the board from five to seven members. That draft language has already been put together between Mr. Sarah and Representative Caldwell, so that will be done simultaneously. Veterans Day is on Monday, and I know there are some events yet this week at some of the schools. I wish we could get to everyone, but cars don't move that fast, and traffic's a little slow, so I know I've got a couple I'm going to go visit. Pride and patriotism occurs again on Thursday night this week at Barbara B. Mann, so I would encourage anybody who's... encourage anybody who's got the time and to go and enjoy that particular program and recognize the value, the extraordinary value that vets have provided to all of us through the sacrifices they've made in service to the country. It's, it's a very important event for us not to forget about, and people for us not to forget about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
I'll make this very short tonight. First, I know Mr. Getz left already, but he's correct. You know, we need to continue to look at them and see what we can do. They're valuable employees of this district, and somehow down the road, I don't know why or how come, but they've slipped through the cracks. Our teachers, I was very proud to do the ratification tonight. It's well-deserved, and I think they deserve a lot more than just that. They work very hard, and there's times I've talked to some teachers, it's nine, 10 o'clock at night, they're still home doing work, and they're not, they're not getting paid any extra for it, they're just doing it because they love what they're doing. And they work very hard, very diligently. They deserve it. I also want to take the opportunity to thank, again, Norfolk Myers Academy of the Arts, Steel Band, when they came out today and played just before the meeting. One of the young students there actually is a friend of mine, Nicholas Burke, and I was kind of disappointed he couldn't make it tonight because he was sick. But, Dr. Graham, I appreciate you scheduling to have them. Hopefully, the media got a chance to go out here and look at them and do maybe a little story about them. That's what this district's all about, is those students. And I pushed this last year, and I'm glad Dr. Graham went ahead and did it this year, because I think sometimes we need to see that. People need to see what's going on with these students, and I think it's a great way to showcase some of the talent that we have out there, because we do have some very talented students beyond belief. And when you see things like that, it really does make you very proud. But I do have two things I do want to discuss with you, Dr. Graham. About a month and a half ago, two months ago, we had a meeting about some safety issues and some things which you was going to be doing, and I was still waiting to hear back from you, what's going on. So I would like a progress report when you do have time, please. The other thing I do want to request is, again, I talked to you about, I'll support personnel, about a turnaround, and what it costs the district. I brought this at the last board meeting, asked you to send it to all my colleagues, and I've still yet to see that. So I'm still waiting on two different things, and after two weeks, you know, I know that's a little lengthy to get that much data, but hopefully I can get that very soon. But the other one, it's, it's been almost two months now, and I'm still waiting for that.
We've talked about the safety checklist, and it was developed, and every school has had it, and we just started after last week's cabinet, Mr. Hayhurst, the SROs have been working on it with the schools that are at the schools. Mr. Hayhurst is now in the process of going to the schools and checking to see where they are, and to be sure that the, at the minimum, that checklist has been taken care of. So it's been in process, and I thought I shared that at a meeting. As far as the non-instructional data, I just got it today. It did take some time to pull together, and I'll be emailing it to everybody tomorrow. Been in meetings today, but you'll have it tomorrow.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Ms. Morgan?
Like every other board member, I share the apology to Mr. Getz that we neglected to mention the substitute teachers in our recognition of National Education Week. Some things I've, I've done over the last couple of weeks that I just want to pass on to the board. I went to the Market Watch Workforce Now session, and I thought there were two, there were two things I walked away with. One was the observation made by the business community that there are foundational skills that we need to be working on in the schools. And we had an interesting conversation at our table about, well, you know, we can't teach kids everything, and we have to take time out of the curriculum to put stuff in. And, and my, my reaction is, you know, I think some of the foundational skills are things that we don't even have to teach, it's just how we practice, it's how we model when we interact with, with people. So, but I, I think there is an opportunity, perhaps, for staff to brief us on how we work on developing these foundational skills from K through 12. I also think that we need to be concerned about Sue Rochon's retirement. We need to be thinking strategically about how we are going to move without her and who we need to bring, to, to replace her, and I think we need to spend some real time on that, not wait until her retirement is imminent. I visited the Sanibel SAC, first SAC meeting I went to, and I was incredibly impressed because within one hour, the principal introduced the district's three objectives, talked about the local school goals, and showed the members of SAC, the data points, the way school progress would be, would be measured over the year. And, and I just, I thought that was terrific, and people understood it, and obviously it had that kind of conversation with the principal before. So this is something she has in place, and I think it really helps parents and faculty to understand it as a team, what's going on. I visited ALC with Dr. Lohmeyer, and I participated in a circle on bullying, and it was fascinating, well, it's not fascinating, it was a great experience. And as we concluded, we were asked, you know, what, what, we participated with students. There were, I believe, six students in the circle with us and several staff. At the end, we were asked individually to say, what would we do to, to, what would we like to see as students to stop the bullying in schools? And one student said, let's just have circles. Every time something is distressful in the classroom, let's just sit down and talk about it in a circle like we did here. And I thought that was a great suggestion. That's where I picked up the piece of information that our students match the national average of 55% have experienced bullying in the classroom. So I think that's, that's, you know, continues to be an ongoing concern. Buckingham, they were, these kids, I was there the day before their fall festival, and everybody was, was excited. There was a lot going on, a lot of energy, a lot of good stuff. So it was a fun school to visit. Mrs. Dozier mentioned that she and I did BuPAC with Dr. Graham last Thursday, and I just want to say that I thought she was very effective and persuasive in her comments on Common Core, and I want to thank her for the, for the presentation she did, because that's an important group for us to reach. STEM at Work, stopped by for just a little while because I had another meeting to go to. There's nothing like watching kids work as a team, hands-on, doing projects, high school kids. They were having, they were having a great time. Two observations from all of my visits that I would like to pass on. One, it occurred to me talking to one of the principals that maybe we can use our website to post either school needs or student needs without identifying students on our website so that communities can respond to individual student or school needs. So that's just one thought I throw out. And the other thought I had while watching the STEM at Work was, when we're doing construction and we haven't, I know we can't have kids work on construction, like, I know we can't have them in construction sites, but I thought it would be kind of interesting if, when plumbing is inspected, or electrical is inspected, or whatever all these inspections are that they do with construction, that students who are involved in STEM be allowed to trail the inspectors and, and just hear, you know, what it is they're looking for and talk about the work, just as a way of getting kids involved in what's happening in their school. And that's the conclusion of my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Dozier. Yes, several of us attended the luncheon at Nature Park to talk about field trips, and I know last year I had the opportunity to attend, and I bought a couple of school buses. They were auctioning off the little toy school buses, and, and it was $200 a bus, I believe, to send students on field trips. And that, you know, this is something that, that is offered to our students. All they have to do is, like, fill out a request to be able to go. And I just would like to publicly thank the Cronin family, Pam and Tom, for all of the work that they do to give back to the community. And of course, education is always a focus and something that they continue to, to stress always. Yes, I won't touch on BuPAC, but there was Common Core, and that just shows that, that there continues to be more and more groups out there that are interested, they're, they are now hearing about it, and this is going to be something that's going to be a, a continued conversation over the next couple of years. Also, I was asked at, I believe, the last board meeting to say something about clinics. Well, it just so happens that I happened to get a board, I actually got an email from a friend of mine, and he said, Jeannie, just wanted to let you know the additional success we are having with, he must have been listening in when we had that conversation, Mr. Armstrong, because he said, Jeannie, just wanted to let you know that the additional successes that we are having with our clinic. We are entering into the fourth year without an increase in our health insurance premiums, which is more than we can say for our health insurance premiums. They have not had an increase in four years. In addition, we are looking into the possibility of adding some additional services such as bus driver physicals and employee drug testing. We are also looking at processing some of our workman's compensation claims through the clinic as well. A number of other districts are already doing that, and it has been quite successful. As always, if you have any questions, please give me a call. And I will say again, over a year ago, I asked that we invite the superintendent from Charlotte County and the, I think the chair, I think he was, might have been chairman of the board at the time, but he serves on the FSBIT board, which is the Florida Insurance Task Force, or whatever, at the state level. And I asked that they, you know, come down and report to us on a briefing about their clinics, because we've heard from staff, we've heard from recommendations from them. Now let's hear from our peers and let them tell us how they feel about a clinic and what it's doing. And I think that's the best way for us to restart the conversation. So I would ask you again if in the near future we can have, because they, they actually go around the state and are promoting clinics because it's such a wonderful thing, and I know that FSBA is also promoting health clinics as well. So I'll just put that out there. Also, on October the 18th, taps sounded for a soldier's soldier, Colonel Ted Stewart Timberlake. And not only was he a dedicated member of this community's education community, but he was also a parent, and he was a, he was a friend to education. He served at Cypress Lake High School as the ROTC instructor from 1972 to 1986. And then he resigned to pursue a seat on the Lee County School Board, and he served as the Senior Army Director of Instruction for the school district. It was the largest Army JROTC program in the nation at that time, which is pretty significant. I mean, I think that that, that is very significant, and because it's oftentimes the leadership that gets people involved in programs. Again, the community lost a tremendous, tremendous pillar, and I would like to say, I know that we don't have any schools right now that are, we're breaking ground for, but as we, and I know that we will be building, and as we build in the next few years, I would ask that we take this name and consider this name as a name for a school, simply because of all the contributions that he made to the education community and to the community as a whole. And I would like to offer my sympathy and my condolences to his family. Mr. Rutherford has already gone. I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Rutherford. In fact, Dr. Graham and I both met with him, and so he decided that it would be best for him to come, and at some point, we might want to have a conversation around what he provided us, this backup materials. Dr. Graham has told me the way that they, they actually do this down in Collier County, and we might want to talk about that in the future. I heard mention of the expansion, the special amendment that's going to be on the ballot for expansion of the school board, and when we talked about this once before, I actually said that we should be talking to our county commissioners to find out if any of them have had any conversations or anything. Well, I had the opportunity to talk just this week with two commissioners, and they have not started the conversation. So I don't know whether we want to, you know, start a conversation with them. In fact, one of them said, you know, did, did we ever have joint meetings? And I said, well, it's funny that you ask. Years ago, we actually used to do that. You know, we would, we would have meetings with the county commission board, the board of county commissions and the school board, and we would talk about issues that, that the two of us had in common, and those were very productive meetings, and we might want to look into doing that again in the, in the near future, especially as we move forward with this particular issue that's going to be on the ballot. And Madam Chair, that is all that I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Okay, I don't know, Mr. Martin, do you have a comment regarding the distribution of the bibles?
Well, I was aware that Mr., yes, ma'am. I was aware that Mr. Rutherford intended to address the school board this evening, so if the board has any interest in considering his request, I'd be happy to provide you legal advice on that matter.
I should have called you when we had the meeting, shouldn't I?
No, that's fine.
But I think, I think Dr. Graham brought your voice very softly.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something that you would want to do now or reserve for another time?
Whatever the board desires.
Do we want Mr. Martin's advice? No? No? Mrs. Dozier?
I just said, I think it'd be a topic for.
Okay, another discussion. Okay, great. Yeah, we, I had some communication earlier this year with Commissioner Pendergrass, and he approached his colleagues about having a joint meeting with us, and they did not vote unanimously that they were interested in that. So I just thought I, I thought I had reported that at a board meeting recently.
Well, maybe you did, maybe I wasn't here.
Oh, okay, yeah. So I, I have visited many schools, and I don't want to be redundant. I, I had a great time judging the red ribbon door decorating contests at Challenger Middle and meeting students who had wonderful, wonderful things to say about what they were doing to live a drug-free life. I have participated also in a circle at ALC, and it's time well spent. I was blessed to be able to attend the cross-site training for the NEA in Washington, DC, regarding the grant we have on closing the achievement gap, and I was very proud that there, in that forum of districts from across the nation, we were mentioned twice as being outstanding with our efforts. So thanks to our union leadership, to our foundation, and of course, to our teachers and students who are working so hard at implementing that program. I also had an opportunity to attend the Florida Alliance for Health, PE, Recreation, Dance, and Sport in Orlando, and I was presented with a community service award, which I accepted on behalf of the School Health Advisory Committee, who are a team of people who continually work and advocate for children's health as a means to successful lifelong learning. The conference, conference topics included national efforts for comprehensive health education and an offer for Lee County to be a leader in the state along those lines. I got out of the education market watch that we are looking for those workforce foundational skills of active listening, critical thinking, interpersonal skills, teamwork, problem-solving, reading comprehension, and financial and business basic math. And there were some people there who represented early childhood, and their theme is kindergarten is too late, and it is too late, and we need to partner with, partner with them so that the transition and our kids coming to us in kindergarten will be ready for what we expect of them. I loved STEM at Work, the luncheon at the Shell Factory, and the nature park, and the fact that the Cronins fund field trips for our kids is amazing, and I certainly appreciate their support. I will be at Pride and Patriotism on Thursday, and on Friday be visiting some of the schools for different veterans' celebrations. for different veterans' celebrations, and I do thank our veterans for their sacrifices because they have made it possible for us to enjoy our freedom. And the Heights Center is going to be opening their own clinic, so we might want to visit that and take a look at that. Mrs. Dozier. And that's all I have this evening. Mr. Martin?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Graham?
I'm looking forward to Pride and Patriotism as well. I went last night to rehearse with them, and the kids just play amazingly well, so it was, I'm looking forward to it, it's going to be a very special evening. And I think we can, we can never do too much to honor our veterans. We can never do too much. Most of the school ceremonies are happening Friday, since we have no school on Monday. I would encourage parents and students to take some time on Monday to think about why we have the day off, rather than just that we have the day off. I would challenge parents to have a conversation with their children about what Veterans Day is really about. I know that we're doing that in the schools, and it'd be great for them to hear some reinforcement at home about the same thing. I also got to attend the convening, the NEA convening meeting in Washington, D.C., with administrators and teachers and Donna and Mark and Marshall Bauer from the foundation. It was fascinating, and what I came away with was a challenge from former South Carolina Governor Riley, who also was the Secretary of Education at one time, and he said that our country has failed really lately to rally around any one thing. It's difficult for us to agree on anything. And his challenge was that, wouldn't it be fabulous if the country agreed that children and their education was the number-one priority, or just the children were the number-one priority? And if that were to happen, all the other things that we spend time on would probably drift away, and there'd be much agreement and much energy. Of course, I'm willing to take on a lot of responsibility, but not for the entire country. But I would like to challenge my own sphere of influence, and that would be this school district and this community, that we work to look at making children and their education our number-one priority. And if we're all living that and breathing that and sharing that, perhaps it could become a reality. They are my priority, and I continue to be honored to serve as the superintendent of this school district.
Thank you, and I certainly will support that. The next scheduled meetings of the board. On November 13th, we'll have a board organizational workshop at 9:00 a.m. at the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools on Second Street in Fort Myers. November 19th, 2013, we'll have a special school board meeting at 2:00 p.m., followed by a school board workshop, and then our school board action meeting that evening at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Scott and supported by Mr. Armstrong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your patience, and be home safe.